All right. Good evening. I would like to call the August 18, 2020 Board of Selectments meeting to order. Can I have a roll call of who is in attendance?
Bonin present.
Cortez present.
Davis present.
He is present.
Morris present. I do not have any announcements this evening, so I'd like to go right into the first agenda item, which is the Economic Development Committee has a major project announcement. We have Bob and Eric and the project performance here, which are Kevin Lobeser and Andy Leonard. So it's all you, Bob. You guys can come on up if you want.
Sure. Did bring out.
Thank you.
It was a little bigger than the eight and a half by eleven, so sorry about that.
That's all right.
Figures bad in my eyes, don't worry.
Just kind of had the same thought.
Quickly realizing I'm not in my twenties.
Sure.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, town administrator. Finally, the EDC has a major project to announce. I'd like to personally thank everyone involved in making this major project become a reality. Without further ado, I'd like to introduce the joint adventure team of Mr. Kevin Lobeser of Lobeser Building Corp., a reputable company responsible for multiple projects in this area, and Mr. Andy Leonard, owner of Pine and Sand Gravel, a proud icon in Douglas for his operation on Gilboa Street. Just like the disclaimer at the end of a political ad, I'm Bob and Eric, and I approve this project. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Okay, hi. As Bob said, I'm Kevin Lobeser, so nice to meet everybody here. And that's my partner over there, Andy. Appreciate the time tonight, and what we were hoping to do was to just kind of give you guys a little bit of a brief overview of the hopeful future project that will be located where the current McIntyre loom pit is up off Northeast Main Street. Our project would include permitting and building of approximately a 1 million square foot distribution-style building. It would have the associated parking for the employees and the trailer parking needed to operate the facility. It would be our intention that we would be able to serve the facility with town water, town sewer, and natural gas. That's something that Bob's been trying to work on.
Working on it.
Yep. And as Bob said, we've been working with Bob through the EDC for quite some time now. It feels like maybe, I don't know how long now, Bob.
A decade.
You've called a lot, I know that. So early in the process, when we brought the original plan to, just to show Bob and kind of get a feel for what he thought the temperature would be with the town would be, Bob made us really kind of understand that he thought that we would be better suited with quick access to Route 146. And if you look at the handout that I gave you, we, our project actually has the frontage that goes out to the Northeast Main Street side. I think Bob was 100% correct in thinking that if we're going to end up having a lot of truck traffic, it would be great to get them out onto the highway really quickly. And so we completely agree with Bob on that, and our preliminary design plan does show that we are going to be trying to access directly out into Gilboa, which I think the board knows, obviously, that that 17 acres is currently owned by the town. And I guess what we were hoping is that the town would, you know, consider that surplus land and that we might be the successful bidder to purchase that property. If that process does happen and we are the successful bidders on that property, that would allow us to move forward with the project that you see in front of you right now. The, you know, obviously Andy and I, and I think the EDC strongly believes that this project is a great fit for the town of Douglas. It's going, this particular location provides an unbelievable easy access to the highway. There's no need to go through any neighborhoods or even through the town center, so it's really laid out very well for that. And it's going to, this building would require a minimum of 500 employees and obviously provide significant real estate tax revenue for the town. We have, I think I gave you some numbers, Bob. I don't know if you ever talked to the board, but, you know, obviously, it's up to the town to decide what the real estate value is going to be. But just for some rough ideas, these buildings, on the building permit card, would be anywhere from $65 to probably $72 a square foot for construction costs. So the building itself from a construction side is probably somewhere in the $70 million range, so I think that is pretty significant in Douglas. We know, just because we've done a fair amount of this type of permitting for these projects, that there's going to be a lot of people that are going to want to know who's going to occupy the building. It's, unfortunately, it's really just not that easy of an answer. And I'd like to try to explain to you just quickly how the distribution centers actually come together in any location, in any town that you would see, especially in the Northeast. And I say especially in the Northeast because permitting in the Northeast is notoriously very difficult compared to these type of buildings when they go in somewhere into the Midwest or into down in the South where there's, you know, an abundance of land and an abundance of communities that are looking for the tax dollars. And of course, there's a lot of big highways in those areas, so yeah, I'm sure we've all driven by them and seen that type of stuff. So, so really, how it comes together is typically a local developer like myself, who in this case I partnered up with Andy, we would secure the property and we would do the work that we've been doing with the town so far to secure permitting and make sure that it's a good fit for the community. The next step for us is to, is to reach out and develop a partnership with one of the large national, you know, super-large real estate organizations that would be ultimately the people that would fund the construction of the building, and at the same time, they would be doing the marketing for the building. The third component is obviously the user. So these users, by the sheer size of this building, are going to be, you know, one of the many large Fortune 500 companies that are out there, so it's anywhere from Lowe's, Home Depot, Best Buy, Target, Walmart, all of those type of users are the people that would ultimately be a potential user for this property. But the reality is that because they're publicly traded companies, in the Northeast, they will not commit to a site until the hurdles to permit and the hurdles to know that the project is moving forward will actually move forward. Because unfortunately, there's been a lot of executives that have made that decision who, when they realized they couldn't get a permit for two or three more years, were no longer executives at those companies. So, so, I mean, I know that you guys know that there's plenty of hurdles for us to clear before any development can happen. In this particular case, for this project, we're obviously going to need to complete, you know, all of our final engineering. Another very important step to these type of projects is clearly the traffic studies and making sure that that's been vetted and clearly, you know, that ends up in front of the planning board, of course. We, you know, we need to be successful in seeking approvals from the, you know, Town of Douglas's Planning Board, Conservation Commission, DEP, Army Corps of Engineers, and MEPA. So for the people that don't maybe understand MEPA, I mean, MEPA is really where we kind of dive into a lot of the traffic stuff and, you know, air quality and just water quality and all that fun stuff. Yeah, I'm sure you guys have questions, but, you know, clearly, we're hoping that your board sees that this is, you know, a great fit and could be a great neighbor for the town of Douglas, and obviously Andy and I are hoping for your support.
Your presentation kind of took most of the questions.
I was just going to say, I can't think of anything to ask.
Well, one thing that I would add, Mr. Chairman, if I may, when, when I get involved with these type of projects, I think the thing that's made us successful, whether it's a residential project or a commercial project or an industrial project, is in the last 25 years, we have never gotten approvals for a project and not started and completed the project in a timely fashion. I'm very comfortable that if you, if you guys, it might be difficult during COVID, but I mean, you know, I can give you the list of towns that we've been working in and, you know, and I hope it'll happen in Douglas. I've really, I've never really worked in Douglas, and, but in the towns that I work heavily in, towns like Franklin, Upton, Milford, Bellingham, and it's been a great relationship because whenever there can actually be a, what you would consider a private-public partnership, I mean, and I think Andy is the reason why Andy and I met instead of doing our roles, because Andy recognized that that was the relationship type of building and the relationship they had with the towns, is they typically seek us out, you know, so it's been, it's been a really neat, you know, people ask all the time, "How do you find all this land?" I'm like, "Huh, the town, they've called me." I don't know why, but they've called me. So, but where I was going with that is that, so that means that just by definition, I don't want to be associated with any partners who don't think the same way and don't want to execute things the same way. So we don't take it lightly when, when we team up with that large national type of real estate company that I mentioned, and, and the people that we are aligned with have super, super deep pockets, and their, their model is permitted, we're going to build it, because they know when they build it, their, their group of customers come to them. So I think it's important, especially for the residents of the town, to hear that because this is not, a lot of times if you're using a much smaller or a, or maybe even more of a regional type of person, their model is typically to get it permitted, and then they want to tie Andy and I up for one to three years to try to find an off-taker, and that means that nothing happens on the site until that happens. Our teammates do not do that. We get it permitted, appeal periods are over, it's been successful, we build the building. They're building a building that is a taxable property, and they're the ones who are taking the risk to get the tenant in there. So I just think that, I thought that would be something you'd like to know.
It's actually a better business model, because you guarantee revenue everywhere.
Correct. And it also goes back to what I said about where these large companies come from. They want certainty. So these guys understand that when they can walk somebody, it's like, it's no different than shrink it all the way down to a small house subdivision. When you have a spec house that's up and someone can walk through it and it's painted and done, it's easy to sell. When you're trying to sell somebody the dirt, there's not a lot of people that can understand what it is. So when they can walk their, you know, say a Walmart's, you know, super-regional rep through a building, "Oh, my God, like, we can really move into this thing tomorrow," it's, it's a good model for them, so.
Probably far too premature, but do you anticipate having to expand Gilboa Street? Widen it?
That depends on the traffic study.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, to be fair, Andy and I have talked about that, and as far as like a major expansion, we don't see that. It's never really come up on any of our other MEPA or things like that, but what could absolutely be necessary would either be a possibility of a slight widening for an acceleration lane or a decel lane, because obviously, we don't want to, and that will come through the traffic study, because, you know, if it starts to queue up and back things up, then you have to make that provision.
It's wide enough now for three lanes.
Yeah.
If you had a paint.
Yeah, we looked at that, right? So it wouldn't, it's probably a lot more striping there than, than building it out wider and wider, but it may need a few more feet, I think, Andy, when we looked at it, if you had to do a decel or an acceleration lane.
Obviously, the land is there, too, if you have to widen it. There's nothing in the way, so.
Yeah, yeah.
We had a great rapport with the water department today and sewer. It's been right there, so everything, everybody's been great.
Yeah.
I got to give commendation to Bob. I'm pretty sure he was coming to your house and starting to talk.
Yeah, I think he had, might have eaten over my house, too. I'm not sure. He's tenacious, I love it.
No, I mean, it, a project, and I'm sure Hal can speak to it well, a project of this size and scope and nature is kind of like, almost like what the doctor ordered, you know, for the town of Douglas. Not all that long ago, we went, this board went forward and supported a Prop 2 and 1/2 override, you know, just to try and keep our budget whole and all of our departments whole. And one of the two things that came from that was, one, we're not going to seek another override.
That's not easy.
The community's not going to support it.
Yeah.
And the other one was is that we were going to be very aggressive at economic development, even doing as much as like looking into bylaw changes to make it so it's easier and more business-friendly for you guys to be able to come in. You know, I mean, we'd love to do a whole bunch of large-scale projects like this, but I mean, any economic development is definitely welcome.
This gets us on the map.
Well, Mr. Chairman, this, this, Mr. Chairman, the one thing I would add to that is I'm not advocating that, that we're going this direction from tonight, but just to give you some insight on some other communities that we've worked in, Town of Franklin in particular, one of the, one of the projects that they came to me with was, it was a technical project that was going to be difficult to attract the kind of off-taker that you needed. And we did a lot of research, I helped them, we had, we brought in another consultant, and we learned a lot together. And what they ultimately did was, they didn't, they didn't roll out the red carpet completely for a future development, but what they did is they actually, at town meeting, voted in an expedited permitting process for that particular zone. And it, it kind of goes back to what I just said about these national people, you know, we're all accustomed to this process, right? So we're used to, we're going to go to the planning board nine times, the conservation 10 times, it's just, it's just what we know happens. But the real big players that can come in and really make a real difference in some of these properties, it's just not what they, whether it has to happen or not, they just don't want to deal with it, so they just simply drive past. So, so, I don't know. I don't know how easy that would be for your town to get together, and you don't, you don't do expedited permitting for every project, you know what I mean? It's for, you know, maybe it's a small industrial zone where you know you kind of are trying to target an area and you, and you have an idea of who's going to go there, and you've thought about how they're going to access the property, and, you know, you do have the, the water and sewer resources, so hey, what are we really, you know, what are we really expediting, you know? You got to deal with, you got to deal with conservation, you got to deal with traffic, and, and we're not going to, you know, make this thing more difficult than it has to be. So I'm just telling you, I know that's a, that's, that's something to consider, I guess.
Somebody that's sat in on many planning board meetings along with Andy over there who understands that there's nothing I'd like to see faster, better than a planning board meeting under three and a half hours. That'd be a nice thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I don't know if that's a heavy lift. Expedited doesn't mean shortcuts.
That's correct. That's correct. Absolutely.
There's a certain criteria that's already been met and kind of moved through.
How, I, I know we don't want to beat that. What they did do is they actually ended up, I don't remember where they, which board they came from, but they actually put a person in place that was the liaison between planning board, conservation, board of health, just to try to not to have so much of a, I don't want to say the word, a cluster on that, you know what I mean? They just, they tried to keep everything moving forward is really what they did, exactly your point. Nothing was overlooked, it's just, they don't beat the same point.
Matt, it's a new job for Bob.
Yeah, well, with all due respect to Bob, I actually think that's where your town administrator steps in, because of my background and legal training and other things, and the role of the town administrator of managing the affairs of the boards and being of assistance to the boards, and I'm an economic development guy. I want Bob to continue to do what he does, so bird-dogging. Once, once you're submitting plans and getting down to the weeds, he's going to go get the next project.
Yep.
Look how long it took us for this, right?
It's a lot of work.
So by the time you guys are ready to say we're ready for a tenant, I need him to be back here.
With the next project.
With a conceptual drawing.
Yep. Yeah, you wanted the other drawing? No, no.
Having said that, Bob would be an intimate part of this project and other members of the department heads and the staff. You can do formal expedited permitting, but you can also informally game the clock by just putting your nose to the grindstone as a team.
Yeah.
And going through every plan page by page and looking at the relevant official in town and saying, "Okay, so there's the stream, what do you think?"
Yeah.
Don't look at that stream 10 weeks into this process. Tell us right now. The goal in Rhode Island is very formal, so you probably, if you've ever worked in Rhode Island, it's Technical Review Committee.
Yep.
It's part of everybody's comp plan, and that's what you do when a project is of a certain size. We can still follow the same model, which is, let's address all of the concerns so that your planning board experience is two or three months, not six, because we're not adding things as we go along. That list is going to be real long at first, and we just chop it down.
Yeah.
By the time it gets to them, all of the things that somebody might pick up on when they see the plan for the first time, they're not going to see, because we've already done it.
There's simple things like if you have 30 days to make a decision, don't wait until day 29 to stop that process.
And then we get the nine-page list of the problems in the plan, that's the norm, yeah, yeah.
Douglas was actually one of the first towns to adopt expedited permitting. Initially, two locations, Matt, we modified one of the areas, so we're not far into it. And if it's necessarily to be a project, or we can go a little more conventional, but certainly I think there'd be support to do that.
Appreciate that. I like Matt's approach, too. I mean, I think that's the great approach. Work together.
We can mimic the process.
Well, I guess, you know, really, the last thing I had to say, guys, is that we, you know, we're geared up, we're, we're ready, we've, we've done as much of the engineering as we can do until we, you know, we kind of have our next, I guess, rules to go by.
Next step.
Next step, yeah, yeah.
Something to us about Andy's town meeting?
Kevin, how many projects similar to this have you done already?
So we've been in a pretty interesting situation. I'm sure most of you know the old Varney Brothers Sand and Gravel.
Yep.
So those kids got, you know, they didn't want to run a concrete company, right, Andy? So they got, they got left a lot of land and they really didn't, you know, it's not what they did. So I'm not sure how many I've helped and worked on to get approved, but we've done a lot of the stuff all in and around the Bellingham corridor there where they have all that land, so that's what we've been developing. That's how we started getting involved in these type of high bay buildings.
It's not your first work.
No, no, definitely not. No, no.
I don't have any questions.
Well, I'm good.
No, I think it's exciting. I think this is exactly what many people in town would want to see, and thank you for coming.
Okay, thanks for having us, guys. I appreciate your time. Thank you, guys.
I'd just like to thank Bob and the EDC for all of their hard work.
Yeah.
They retired pilot, and I think that training was a checklist to the first.
Yeah.
He hasn't had to land on the Hudson River either yet. But this is something we've been looking for since I've been in town, something that's going to be commercial tax revenue and jobs. When this gets going, I could see we have a job fair and some priority given to Douglas residents for focal part-time employment, so I see nothing but good things about this, and I think the board wants to do everything it can to make this a reality.
Appreciate that, Hal. Yeah, and I absolutely second that Bob is, you know, all kidding aside, he's been unbelievable.
Have you camped on your front lawn for a while?
I have definitely walked by, one of our conference rooms has all glass doors, and during the day, I've walked, I go, "Bob's in here." "I got time, I'll wait for you, Cap, whenever you free up." "Okay." Thank you. Thank you, guys. Good meeting.
Just to give you a scope size of this building, PJ's is 630,000.
This is a third of a mile long. I did the math. If you've got this parking spot down here, Matt, you have to be training, I think. Is that a shot of me?
No.
All right.
Well, it is now that you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Appreciate it.
I'm an advocate for CrossFit. I am less fat than I was a month ago.
Thank you. Good evening.
All right. So number two is town meeting with the town moderator and town clerk. I did get a message from town clerk stating that she was on another call, but she was going to try and jump in. I don't know if she's successfully done that as of yet.
I don't see it on the list.
So we can defer to town.
Okay. Do you know how to tell if somebody does CrossFit? You don't have to, they'll tell you.
Oh, that's fantastic. They can help you get enthusiastic. This is true.
All right, so let's jump in. I'm trying to see how long I can actually go with wearing a mask during one of these meetings, and that is going to be part of the protocol for town meeting. We've, you know, we've scoped out the, the elementary school field. I appreciate the, the school's help on that, as well as cable's help. We had a really good meeting with the, with the superintendent, the facilities director, so there was, it was very productive. There's going to be issues, because there's no two ways about it. We're... So, you know, it's, it's something we haven't done before, and, you know, we're, we're flying by the seat of our pants a little bit, you know, as, as we try to think of every contingency that, that we can. We are going to have the seats set up on the field, six feet apart from each other. We will have a section for people who cannot wear masks for whatever reason, but, you know, masks are required. Once they check in with the town clerk, they will move to their seat, request that everybody stay seated, no milling around, anything like that. One of the big things that, that we're having trouble figuring out was the mic system and the projector. Being at 10:30 in the morning, I don't have access to a projector that is a light cannon, and nor do the people that I know do. However, we're fortunate in town to have a person named Christopher Hubbard. And Chris Hubbard owns a company called Emergency Production Incorporated. They do live event production on a very, very large scale. So I, I had contacted him and just said, "Hey, I have a board of select meeting, I'd like to get figures for getting some sort of, you know, live screen up there so that we can still show the, you know, show the slides throughout the day," or, you know, "throughout the day." Wow. And his suggestion was to do two large monitors. He actually said, "Yeah, we could do more than that," but I felt that two large monitors on either side of the podium would be sufficient for what we're trying to do. And he also has a wireless mic system, of which my initial thought is probably three to four microphones, and he is going to donate that equipment, so.
That's terrific.
Yes. So big, big thank you to, to him for doing that. He did say he had a specialized projector, but it would need 220, and I think to get 220 out there might be, might be a stretch. So, as it is, I'm probably going to be bringing a generator. The extension cords that we're going to be looking at are going to be quite, quite long, so I'm going to bring a generator, and I'll bring my sound system as well. I'm trying to limit contact as much as possible. Douglas obviously has an extremely, extremely low rate, but, you know, COVID infections, but I just, I, I view it as my job to minimize the risk to people as much as possible. So when somebody has a question, I will be bringing the mic to them. You guys, you know, will have a mic, as you normally do, set up at your table as you get, you know, a, a large amount of questions. I will bring the mic to them, they can go ahead, ask their question, hand the mic back to me, I'll wipe it down, and then, you know, go back. So again, there's, there's going to be some jockeying and figuring some of this stuff out on the fly. And you guys did not exactly give me a lightweight warrant to work with here. So with that, obviously, there's, there's nothing we're going to do with the finance committee report or the budget. Those, those two things are, you know, just, they are what they are. As much as I despise that phrase more than I can ever tell you, you know, that we just, we need to go through those as we normally do. We go through the subsections of each. If anyone has any questions, you know, we go back to the place that they had questions, we vote on the whole thing. Article three, I don't like to separate that one out because it, it involves money to my position as well as... Article four, that, I believe, should also be, you know, in its own article so that it can be talked about and debated as people see fit. I plan on combining and taking a motion from the floor for article three, so we won't need somebody to come up, you know, and, you know, present it or anything like that. But I will take a motion from the floor, and we'll ask if there's any debate, and then, you know, it is one that has passed by unanimous consent for many years, so I will offer that, you know, that avenue. Same with articles five, six, seven, and eight. I'm going to seek to combine those articles with a motion from the floor, as well as entertain a motion for unanimous consent. Article nine, have there been any significant changes to article nine other than the COLA increase of 1.75?
I heard Charlie Brown's teacher out there.
Basically, there's a new M4 position Assistant Fire Chief.
Okay. Wah, 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 wah. All right. So, that one, we'll go through the full, you know, the full presentation and everything. So, if we could just make sure that we have that as part of a slide, you know, just the difference between this year and last year. Article 10, article 11, I'll also probably take a motion from the floor. I believe those are pretty straightforward. And then, you know, again, if there's any dissent to taking the motion from the floor, if there's any dissent to passing something unanimously, then, you know, then we bring, you know, we go back to the, you know, normal route of how we take things. But, as I'm trying to save time on some of the things that are just more rote, so that we can devote more time to the things that are not. Article 12. So, that was one of the things I was going to ask. Please make sure I have a map of that. I believe this is, article 12 is the discussion that we just had here.
Yep.
You know, and again, there's always, you know, a small amount of leeway, but, you know, people need to understand that, you know, the sale of land is what the article is about, not what's happening with the land, other than, you know, that it's being put forward into the, you know, into the public bidding process, and should we sell it, should we not sell it? Article 13, you got me. I've not seen anything like this in my years being moderator, so if somebody could shed a little bit of light on kind of what this is about, I believe I was actually at the last board of selectmen meeting where this was being broached. But, you know, again, this is not something that I'm overly familiar with, and would probably want a little bit of explanation from Rich as well about the process here. But if you could give me just kind of a brief overview, that would be helpful.
Bill, you ready to speak?
Which one is article 13?
The Cedar Street Bridge takings.
Cedar Street Bridge takings pertains to a project that the town has been awarded a $500,000 grant for improving the Cedar Street Bridge. We've had our engineers working on it for probably the past six months. They're at a point where they just submitted today the design plan to Mast DOT, but as part of the project, there is going to be a number of easements that need to be taken. They're all relatively small in size. You know, I don't have the sheet in front of me, but it's a relatively short list. A few of them are permanent, but the majority of them are temporary for construction purposes only. The dollar values were assigned by the town assessor's office, and in the event that we're not gifted easements, we would need to move forward with eminent domain.
So, in other words, take your $9.24 or get a lawyer from, a letter from us?
Correct, correct.
Or taking your 68 square feet of land, whatever it is, 84 square feet.
Yeah, I think that they're all very small areas.
Yeah, there's a couple that are bordering 900 square feet. So, basically, this is, this is giving the town the ability to move forward, as you said, either you're going to buy it, you're going to give it to us, or we're going to take it by eminent domain.
It is interesting, though. Why does the 902 square foot section get $395 versus the 299 square foot section only pulls, or maybe that's proportionally correct? Hold on. No, 855 square feet's $46.17.
Might be frontage versus, I mean, who?
That would be my guess.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, just guessing.
Correct. You know, and I have to defer to the assessor's office for that answer, but it could be in shape of a lot. It could be if it's in wetlands, you know, there's a number of things that come into play with the value.
Okay. Again, if you could please make sure that I have maps for this.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. The article 14, the, can you give me the rationale on the changes?
Is this solar bylaw?
Okay. Yes, solar bylaw. The planning board felt that there was a need to adopt a solar bylaw because they were concerned with the number and the size of the proposed solar facilities that are coming in town. There are state laws that allow these things outside of zoning, but it's my understanding, and, you know, town council has confirmed that, in fact, the town can regulate them to the extent possible by adopting a special permit process. And really, that's what this does. It sets a threshold for what's allowed by right, which is anything under 30 KW, and then above 30 KW, it's allowable in all districts, but only by special permit.
Okay.
So, Bill, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What is the effective difference between requiring a special permit and the planning board's existing site plan review?
The current process, well, the special permit does not necessarily get into many of the details currently. The bylaw allows the planning board to adopt their own regulations governing proposed solar facilities. So, purportedly, that would allow them to adopt specific requirements related to solar. Currently, we're kind of fitting it in under our site plan review process, which really didn't, did not contemplate solar facilities when it was drafted. So, it asks for things like parking and, you know, lighting and things that aren't necessarily applicable to solar. So, the intent from the board is that they would have a specific process that deals with solar facility issues, where currently we don't have that. Now, the big picture, special permits are a deniable thing under the planning board, or a site plan review is really not a deniable thing. So, that's probably the major difference.
Bill, do you know what the motivation behind them doing this was? I mean, aren't the state guidelines sufficient enough for us to run by? I mean, I know that there's, solar's become pretty popular, and I know it's a decent revenue stream or source under pilot agreements for municipalities.
From the comments I've heard the board think, their concerns are, you know, proximity to a butters, stormwater from these sites, traffic during construction, things, again, there's no real state guidelines on regulating these facilities. There's some guidance documents out there, but they're not regulation and required. They're more left to the towns to implement, whether it's through the conservation commissions or through the planning boards, like we have under site plan review. But they're guidance. If our regulations don't require it, technically, I don't think we can require it.
Well, I would assume that under construction and things like that, there has to be some guidelines that are currently there. This would be net new construction, regardless of what they're building. So, I mean, as it pertains to a butters and distance and variances, that should still be applicable. I just, I'm not certain how I feel about a special permit being brought in for that. That's all.
Section, Master General Law, section 48, section three, chapter 48, section three, includes what's called the Dover Amendment, which has specific criteria regarding solar facilities, and basically, solar facilities are exempt from the zoning bylaws. You know, most of the developers we've had thus far regarding solar have worked with the town and have allowed us to, you know, create a permit under the site plan review process. So, we haven't had that challenge, and we haven't had opposition to it to date, which is great. It allows the town an opportunity to comment on these things, and, but technically, they could make an argument to say that they didn't have to file with the town.
Yeah. I guess my only concern is if you get a sizable solar project that comes through, is, you know, they get denied a special permit for whatever reason.
And that's part of the reason that the board wanted to have the ability to say, hey, you know, we've got three solar facilities in this general area, it's really getting overburdened with this type of thing. I mean, it makes it, it does make it a little subjective to them, but they're the planning board, and that, that's what they wanted to pursue.
All right. At least I understand what they're doing. We can debate it at town meeting.
One more question for the record. The zoning code for the town of Douglas includes a sweeping exemption for municipal facilities, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
All right. Well, I'll direct your attention to it, but our zoning code exempts municipal facilities from zoning. So, if the municipality had an interest in the development of the site, like a bona fide economic interest as a partner through some form of economic development corporation or development corporation, it would be exempt.
That's no need for a special permit.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Sorry.
Quite all right. Informative for me as well. So, article 16, I think article 15 is just pretty self-explanatory. It's just cleaning up some of the language. Am I correct on that?
That is correct, yep.
Article 16, I'm guessing has to do with the project that we were discussing today about having a, another use in our zoning toolbox?
Yeah, that's what got to our attention, but it makes it more streamlined moving forward.
Article 17, can someone give me the background on that one, please?
Article 17, when you may recall, Mr. Moderator, I think it was last annual town meeting, we had an article for, similar article for shooting holes of states. Essentially, the planning board wanted to provide service for the residents in particular subdivisions where the developer financially became insolvent, and the town ended up having to finish the project with inadequate funds to finish the project to 100%. So, the monies that we had access to were used towards practical things like paving the road and, you know, putting up guardrails and that sort of thing. This is a little, while it's a structural improvement, it's not an essential improvement to the end where it's a, you know, not a structural part of the road. It does give us the boundary lines of the roadways. So, they're looking to fund money towards installation of highway bounds on Conservation Drive. Last time they did Downs Road, Nancy Way, Crescent, Nessick Street, which was a similar subdivision that the developer had insufficient funds. This time, they want to move forward with Preservation Park, that's the name of the subdivision, which is Conservation Drive. Same dollar amount, probably around the same number of monuments would be installed.
That makes a lot more sense. Thank you. I thought we were building a park or something. I was really, it's like for 12.5, huh? That's pretty good. Article 18, easement, street acceptance, 19. What's, I mean, just fill me in on article 20 and the rationale behind that.
How much time do you have?
About the Reader's Digest.
Yeah. TLDR.
Yeah. So, the...
Too long, didn't read.
What is it?
Too long, didn't read. If you ever see TL, then the semicolon, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
DR, it's too long, didn't read.
That's just, so that's all you have to do? If someone sends me work, it'll be like TLDR?
TLDR.
Yeah, yeah. Usually, there's Reader's Digest version after that. Yeah, I'm hip.
Kids haven't dropped that on me yet.
Long story short is currently, we have three marijuana licenses that the board of selectmen has the opportunity to issue. What we wanted to do is increase that number to five to put it in conjunction with the same amount of licenses that we have for liquor licenses, kind of treating them in the same way and fashion.
And the state's cool with it?
Yep.
See, that wasn't so bad.
Not at all.
All right. So, 21 is just to enter into a pilot. 22.
Most likely, we will pass over.
Okay. I would strongly recommend that.
Try and choose my lucky number.
No, just looking at the vaguities?
Vagueness.
Vagness?
Vagness. That's also potentially tied to the project that they presented to us at the beginning of the meeting, but chances are, I would say that that will be passed over to this one, and probably on November town meeting.
If needed.
If needed.
Okay. Highly recommended.
See? Easy.
Okay. Yeah, that's it. Any questions for me? See you guys outdoors.
Absolutely. Looking forward to it.
Yeah. I might even have to get a haircut or something. I don't know.
Uh-uh.
You have enough people to help you with your project?
I think so. Yeah, I think so. You know, if there's a couple volunteers that want to come down a little bit early, that would be cool. The, Chris had just said he'd need a little help lifting the monitors up, you know, under the thing. I'm going to, I'm going to be running, you know, some of my sound, just because I know my system, you know, so it just kind of gives me a little, little more control over a very uncontrollable situation, so.
How many chairs you putting on the field?
About 100 is where we wound up.
Yeah.
So, the nice thing about being out in the The, Chris had just said he'd need a little help lifting the monitors up, you know, under the thing. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be running, you know, some of my sound just, just because I know my system, you know, so it just kind of gives me a little, little more control over a very uncontrollable situation, so, but.
How many chairs you putting on the field?
About 100 is where we wound up.
Yeah.
So, the nice thing about being out in the field, I mean, like, you know, I, I really want everybody to have a chair, but I wouldn't have to not have the meeting because there would just be standing room. So, we will have a place for anyone who needs ADA accommodations on the track itself because the track itself is a hard material. So, yeah, looking forward to the challenge. It's, yeah, should be pretty neat.
Nothing about 2020 has been easy, so why?
Yeah, why, exactly, yeah, there's, there's no, no sense in, you know, but again, the whole point is to try and keep the general public out of the school facilities, save the, the budget, you know, of having to clean the facilities, you know, so, you know, is it, is it ideal? You know, no, we're at the mercy of the weather and all the other stuff, but, you know, we do have a rain date. We'll see how it goes.
So, I think that's still hurricane season, isn't it?
Yeah.
So, just hypothetically.
Captain Doom and Gloom over there.
Yeah.
You're killing me.
Hurricane Tim comes in on Friday night and just, it's raining, that's all it's doing, is raining Saturday and Sunday. What do you do?
If it's raining on Saturday, Sunday, we have to postpone.
Well, you, what Rich advises, there is a process in the.
Yes.
Moderator to extend the meeting.
Okay.
You would do that.
Yeah, yeah, I would, I'd still, I'd still have to show up.
Yep. That comes that way, I'll come with it.
I appreciate that, I appreciate that, because, well, actually, no, we don't need a quorum for that, so.
You'll find Hurricane Tim's a nice hurricane.
It just.
It's a lot of hot air.
A lot of rainbows and sunshine.
A lot of hot tropical air.
It'll be a regional hurricane as well, it'll hit some of the other towns in the area.
Unicorn?
Yeah.
A lot of it.
See, we planned for these things.
We have little girls every day.
Very good, well, thank you guys for coming.
No, thank you.
Thank you for your work, appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Chris.
All right, so we have to approve the September 2020 spending plan and possible votes, which is again, the 112th spending plan, much like the one before it and the one before that.
Yeah, so there's nothing exciting at this point, it's the same drill, a budget didn't fall to spend this much, we won't spend this much. The school number is real, did she break it up for you?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the real deal, that's what they would, would have been on track to spend.
1,102,705.
Move that we approved the spending plan as set forth in the list in our books.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bone and I.
Cortez I.
Davis I.
You's I.
Moore's I. Brings us next to an update on the food service program investigation and possible votes. I did hear from attorney, well, town council regarding this. He has issued subpoenas to the school district. I believe that the subpoenas were for emails specific to the food service program from Courtney Keegan, Lisa, and I'm sorry, I'm losing it.
The former superintendent, did you include it?
Yes, as well as the former superintendent. So the food services director, the school business manager, and the former superintendent. We have yet to have heard back from the schools council as it pertains to that. The subpoena also asked for any receipts for the same time period in inventory management as well. So, and as of right now, there has been no return answer. His next step, I believe, would be to get courts involved if need be.
Just because I like saying it in Latin, it's a subpoena ducis tacum.
Ducis tacum.
I have a comment, but not fit for the air.
Take it with you.
I will.
It's what ducis tacum.
Ducis tacum, my comment back home.
Go in the subpoena route means we don't pay for Freedom of Information bill and charges and things of that sort?
Correct.
Or any of the timelines.
It's, you have been ordered to provide this data, and they are now required to provide it.
Understood that, yeah.
That's all I have on that, unless you've heard anything otherwise.
That's the same thing I have.
Okay, so hopefully, we will have better reports next Tuesday. Brings us to the discussion on the MMA support of the police bill and possible votes, which I know I have two of the selectmen here who were very fiery about said topic, so I will defer to you two gentlemen.
Well, I can tell you about 6:15 today, I penned a letter for the Board. I don't know if it's an appropriate thing to read and figure out whether, I don't, I started the letter, I don't know where it ends, that's the thing. I don't know what the appetite of this Board is to dig in here or not, but.
I don't know if we want to edit the letter by committee here, I don't think that's particularly, it works very well.
Well, as long as you and the townspeople know that I did do my homework.
No doubt.
All right.
Is that something we do under an executive session, Matt?
No.
No.
All right.
I think when you have a finished product, or what you consider to be a finished product, I think then, if we aired it, check me if I'm wrong, if we aired it to the rest of the Board and moved and voted on it then. I hate letters by committee, it's a pet peeve of mine. Letters by committee are like, what's the old thing about describing the, the old joke about describing the animal?
Too many cops rule in the suit.
That, too, yeah. They just don't work. So I would rather have you taking it upon yourself to author it, that's great. If we have to correct any minor imperfections, I doubt there'll be any, that's fine, but I would rather not have the input of multiple people, shall I say?
Well, that was, that was just to be the vehicle to start the discussion on it. I'm curious as to where the Board is on what the end result of this discussion and exercise should be.
I, I can give you my opinion. I have an extreme dislike of the bill itself being passed, and I think that it was presumptuous at best for the, for the MMA to actually throw support in there, claiming that it's on behalf of the various municipalities throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I think it was irresponsible of them to do that, and I honestly, I'll go on record further and say, it's a crap bill.
I mean, I agree with you, obviously, and I've made it clear to the Board my opinions on the bill, and I'd use stronger language than that if I could.
You're trying to be nice.
But, thank you. But the contents of the bill almost are irrelevant to this discussion. The fact of the matter is, the MMA took a political position on a very important issue before the legislature. In their letter, they specifically talk about how they represent all the communities, and we're hearing now, Tim and I have had discussions from a lot of communities that feel as we do, we were never, this was never brought up as a topic of discussion, and we're getting swept into this. I think I made it clear when Tim wound me up at the last meeting, that it's, it's probably a bad bill for the town, it's going to cost us money if everything that's in there as we stand now survives the legislative process. I think the MMA needs to be reeled back in. I think they need to be very careful about saying how they represent entities that they haven't communicated with when they send this letter. And I'd add my opinion that the letter appears more indicative of one person's opinion than the opinion of any particular group. There was some fairly strong language in there that seemed to me to be indicative, more opinion than policy, and I'll leave it at that.
I think that in the, if we are drafting a letter to them, and that is the role of the Board when Tim's in there, I think a phrase that I would put on there would be, is that you have a severe misrepresentation of local support as it pertains to the community of Douglas.
I think one of the topics of discussion when we do complete the letter, when Tim completes it, we approve, whatever document we approve of, is that we forward it to legislative leadership as well and let them know our feeling, and let them know that the MMA, in this particular instance, does not represent the town of Douglas, or their position doesn't represent our position.
And insert a middle finger emoji.
It is, just to finish the thought, it is something we have to look at. We have an entity out there going, well, we represent all the towns, and this is our position, and nobody's been consulted here. And I think we have to look hard at the MMA's motives here.
Can we withdraw from the MMA?
Well, you, it's an organization, it's a voluntary membership. I, you know, there are, there's annual training and conferences and everything that goes along with being a member of the MMA that are in some ways beneficial.
Right.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you, I mean, I can't imagine being the executive director of a large membership organization, to whom you issue little vote cards when we go to the conference and anywhere, all of our packets have that vote, if you're the designated voter for your community, and we all sit in a really big room where we can't hardly hear anything that anybody says, and we go through the motions of raising and lowering those cards to vote on any number of resolutions. And now you have a major policy discussion, and you don't go through a similar exercise of polling all of the members, and there's a way to do that. We have contacts in every town, I happen to be your contact in Douglas, I was never solicited either through a survey online or any other way to vote on language. So, you know, it really does become one person's opinion.
Right.
What's troublesome for me, as an ICMA member as well as an MMA member, is we are specifically guided by our code of ethics not to take public positions on matters that are being debated by policymakers, that, you know, that there is a time and a place for appointed officials, and the majority of municipal members of the MMA are appointed town administrators and managers, and those few towns that don't have that role, it would be a Board of Selectmen. Where you are politically, but for the majority of us, we're not supposed to be out in front on policy, but that's why people get elected. Our job is to implement the laws created by others.
Right.
And to keep your nose clean and not get into that, that aspect of it. So I, I think it's kind of out of character even for the organization. We, we could have been better served by a more philosophical document that reiterates our commitment to equality under the law.
Absolutely.
And due process and those kinds of things, because those are the core values that even ICMA members can, we are charged to stand up and defend because of constitutional rights.
Out of left field, the thought just occurred to me when you mentioned something, is the MMA a 501(c)(3) organization?
That's a good question. I believe they.
Probably a C6.
They would have to be a C5 or a C6 if they're adopting a political position, otherwise, they'd be violating the provisions of C3. And jeopardizing their tax exempt status.
They have a C5 or C6 because they lobby.
If they lobby, they have to be.
Their entire website is how they lobby for us. I don't know, can we ask them to come here and explain the rationale, or can we get Rich Bowen to dust off one of those subpoenas and get this ass there? Yeah, I, I do want to really be a part of the, the voice here that puts MMA in check, so I'll continue to draft this, much of what you guys had all said, Mike and Hal are maybe behind me nodding in agreement. But will really demand answers ultimately?
Yeah.
CC the governor?
You know, get a letter drafted and get that off to them.
Right.
And then give them a certain lead time to respond to the letter, and then if we don't, then we ask them to come in here.
All right.
If that makes sense.
Yeah, it does, it does make sense. I would like to hear Mr. Beckwith's side of the story, he's the.
If he refuses our invitation, then there's nothing saying we can't reach out to a media outlet.
Right.
Or three.
The media has covered other towns who feel they're in the same position we are, so.
All right.
Precedent for that. And thank you, Tim, for the work you're doing on this.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. All right, anything else on that?
No.
Seeing as none. We will move on to the annual appointments up for renewal. We also, two things that I want to propose or at least bring to your attention, we have new applicants on, for Board of Health as well as for ZBA, which we have not had a chance to interview or talk to them, so I would say on the appointments that we hold back on ZBA and Board of Health, and then move forward with all the others.
Can we schedule those applicants to come in?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Think that makes sense?
Thank you, Hal.
My two cents?
Because of inflation, it's now five cents with you, Hal.
We can do that sooner rather than later, we've been pushing this off since June.
We have, yeah.
Which is why I wanted to move forward with the remaining.
Yeah.
Appointments that are there.
So we're not going to appoint the other zoning board members that are up for, you know?
No, I mean, because I believe there's only one open, there's one open, how many people are there for appointment? There's two people up for appointment and then one new applicant?
Zoning, yeah, the Green is want to be reappointed, right?
Yeah.
We have two. I can give the names if you want.
Yeah.
Michael Fitzpatrick and Daniel Heaney that are up this year, and they both indicated that they would like to be reappointed.
I think I would just, as we have a new applicant, you know, I mean, it's one of those things that you'd want to actually sit down, review, talk with them, and then kind of scale it up and figure out what you want to do. We have two slots that are up for reappointment, I don't think that there's another available slot on, on that board.
On ZBA, there is an open alternate, according to the list.
Yeah, and I think the application was for an actual member.
Actually, I thought it was for the alternate member.
What?
I haven't seen the application. I don't know.
I would, maybe I've been on this board too long, but I remember in the past with a number of ZBA applications, the, the youngest in the block kind of ascended to the alternate position until a full position was open. I don't know necessarily if I see any reason to not follow that precedent, it still didn't be a long time ago.
So, to summarize what's in your packet, Mr. Forget applied to be a member. The zoning board reviewed his application and recommended that he be appointed an alternate. They took their own stand.
Which is.
We generally follow their lead, correct?
I don't know, I, you haven't changed the zoning board member while I've been here?
I think it kind of sits on us for the appointing authority. While they're frequent invitations, the decision's ours.
Kind of afford the opportunity of Mr. Forget to come in and talk at the next meeting.
Yeah.
Let's move ahead with the.
Yeah, I, I think we give him the opportunity to come in. He applied for, from what I can see, unless I'm misreading this, he applied for a full membership, the Board supports him as an alternate for which there is an opening. So I, I think we ought to give him the chance to address us, no?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll just be perfectly candid, I'm, I personally am not comfortable moving forward on Board of Health appointments at this time.
What do we have? Oh, two applications. We have two applicants coming in on the 25th, correct?
Yes.
Well, we wouldn't do anything until then anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So I can defer on the ZBA side of it, if the rest of the Board would like to move forward, or if they'd rather hold, that's up to them. But like I said, I, I'm not comfortable moving forward on Board of Health appointments at this time.
Well, on the Board of Health, we already have the two applicants scheduled to come in at our next meeting, so I think that's the obvious course to take.
If I'm reading this right, there's one existing incumbent and one open spot?
Mm-hmm.
Well, I mean, we say we honor and cherish our volunteers.
Well, I, I honor and cherish our volunteers. Well, I, I honor and cherish our volunteers, but I also feel that, you know, it's more than just being willing to do the job. It's actually stepping up and then doing the job unbiasedly, regardless if it's a popular decision or not.
Well, I don't think we can take any application on any action on the border health when we schedule people to come in in the future.
Agreed.
If there isn't anything we can do tonight and essentially cut those people off at the legs, that's not very fair.
Can we move the appointments to the other? There's no other applicants?
Yeah, my thought process was is that none of the other positions or people that are up for renewal have any additional applicants that are sitting there. So I have no issues with giving a approval and moving forward.
Can we do a blanket vote, or we have to do them individually and state their terms?
I think we can do a.
We've done a blanket vote in the past. That I know.
As presented.
Right.
You know, all boards, other.
Okay. So are we passing over the zoning board's way of thing? Yeah.
I think that was the general consensus.
Yeah, we're passing over, the general consensus is passing over zoning and, and border health, but all others are fine. Anybody up for a motion?
I move that we, we appoint, we appoint all the members whose terms are up for all of the boards, uh, except for the health and the zoning board of the field. I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye. You, aye.
Morris, aye.
I would say, having stepped in this minefield a long, long time ago, if we're bringing in one ZBA applicant, we should bring in all three. If we bring in two Department of Health, Board of Health people, we should bring in the third existing incumbent.
I think at the very least, give them the opportunity.
Absolutely. I have no problems with that whatsoever. I think that's the right avenue to take.
I can, I can learn things. I can.
All right. Uh, next is to approve and sign the easement between Town of Douglas and Cahills possible vote.
I see the fire chief is going to be shy. You know, I have an expert sign language spelling name. Um, which the planning board has asked for this, correct? So whether there needs to be a turnaround on, um, this is why I needed your help. Is it Ledge? Ledge Wood or Ledge Road? Lakeshore? Ledge Shore? Lake Shore?
Lakeshore.
Yes. And Bill is still on the line, so maybe Bill can explain it.
Sure thing. Sure thing. Lakeshore Road is a private way. Um, as such, uh, when an applicant comes in for an A and R plan to the planning board, which is a relatively procedural process, um, there's only, the planning board's limited to only a few things they look at. In this case, it was the road with a, a construction with an grade. And, um, they had some issues the first time the Cahills came in with the quality of the road. They asked for some improvements. The Cahills made the improvements. One of the things that they requested was a turnaround for both highway vehicles and emergency vehicles because the, the narrow nature of the road, it really didn't allow easily vehicles to have a turnaround. Um, so to resolve that issue, they showed an easement in the parking lot of the house or the driveway of the house. Um, so we had town council, uh, land use council review the documentation that was presented. Um, it met the needs of the fire chief and the highway superintendent. Um, town council agreed with the form of the document and the planning board, it in fact did request the document in order to endorse the plan. So currently I'm holding the Mylar Plan that's been endorsed by the planning board pending your acceptance of the easement.
That's easy. And you feel good about it, chief?
It's as good as it's going to get.
Okay. I would entertain a motion to approve the easement as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote?
Bone and I. Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye. You, aye.
Morris, aye. Brings us to minutes. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you, Bill. Timmy, want those signed?
Give a pen, a black pen.
Now make a motion that we approve the water fragment.
Thank you.
Eighteen minutes for August, Ben.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bone and I.
Cortez, aye.
Davis, aye. You, aye.
Morris, aye. Your report, Mr. Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I'll try to keep it brief. I might actually need the chief's assistance on this one in a second. So our community garden continues to grow. Um, we've brought, my understanding, a little over a hundred pounds of fresh produce to the whole pantry. And, um, I would say optimistically, my hope is that we will get to 300 to 400 pounds before the growing season's over. Uh, as always, I want to thank the volunteers who've been really diligent through the hot weather. The hot weather and I don't agree, especially when I'm at work. So I haven't been over much in the last three, four weeks, but I was there today and tried to do my part. Um, we're providing those, you know, I know the clientele there is largely some of our elders. We're providing people who don't have the opportunity all the time to get really fresh nutritious vegetables. So it's been a worthwhile venture. This past week, uh, we are starting to feel the time pressure associated with plans to reopen schools and whether or not we're ready. And just a couple of developments. I have to say in all honesty, at this point, I feel like a civil war surgeon because the patients are rolling in and I've not cut much, but a couple of saws, a bottle of rum and a well-chewed stick. And the only way I'm going to save anybody is to hurt them. Um, we are not presently at a level of organization that I would like to see as a town administrator, as a father of kids. Uh, so I spent the last week trying to make sense of the PPE purchase. Um, we have an obligation to protect students and employees from the pandemic. And the mandate is coming down from DESI to provide people with supplies. And I tried for the better part of a week to get what in the purchasing world is called a written purchase description. It is required of all purchases over $10,000. And my repeated attempts to just, you know, would you please send either a chart or a prose composition that tells me bullet points, what it is that you want to buy? And I don't want to do the procurement. I want you to do the procurement. What I want to see is before you order anything, where you are with pricing and vendor relationships to see if things have changed where we could do better money-wise. Why is this important? The PPE market is all over the place. We've been shielded somewhat from those vagaries in price because MEMA has been generous in distribution of PPE to us. And where we needed to supplement, we've been supplemented with purchases. So I finally got a little bit aggravated and said we need a conference call. We could, I'm going to tell you, I, what I did is I did the spreadsheet by my darn self, okay? Here are the five vendors. Here's the items on the DESI list. This is how they price out for quantity you need. Let's pick everybody who's got the right product at the lowest price, who's on a statewide contract, and I'll just order on the computer. It's called a punch out. It's a special website for Massachusetts statewide contracts. And procurement officers go into that portal, fill out the cart like you would whenever you shop online, but it kicks it back into the administrative process for paperwork. And we don't have to use a credit card and use a purchase order, and here it comes. And, you know, at this point, I, you know, that lends clarity to the conversation, but then there's more data that concerned me. And this is where I'm looking at the chief for some assistance because I needed witnesses to this conversation. And so I had the chief and Lieutenant Worcester. I don't know how long Lieutenant was on the line because he had responded to a call. But the representation was made that, well, we can't order from Amazon because that somehow is a moniker for an interior product. And I'm, I'm thinking of, I think the company's defunct now, but you remember they used to sell novelties at Finger Hut, you know, the little novelties for Halloween.
Yes.
You throw in the kid's bag, right? That's not what Amazon is. They are now one of the largest fulfillment companies in the world. They supply everything from truffle oil from Italy to swing set kits to really big components, to major systems. And Chief Vincent was quick to point out, look, you know, when we need stuff for the ambulance, Amazon has had the best price for adequate supplies, supplies that meet the threshold for FDA approval or whatever safety guideline we're trying to follow.
And I have to step off for two minutes. I'll be right back.
So, you know, I'm, at this point, it's been three days, chief, and I'm starting, I, I just can't get past this. To me, this is nutty bar conversation because at the time that we had that conversation, the supplies coming through Amazon would have been a lot less expensive. With the passage of just five days, a number of important PPE supplies have, I'm going to put the camera on somebody other than, not me, Vice Chairman. The supply's dried up, and so we had to switch vendor choices. In some cases, a little bit more expensive. In some cases, it's more expensive because the supplies are more expensive.
Right.
There's a short supply. Gloves being the most obvious example. But, so here we are. Um, there's just this operational shortfall, in my opinion, as to what we're going to do to protect people. The good news is I was able to get everything and get everything within a one to three day delivery. So some of the stuff is behind me here in the resource room. It will be shipped here. Because after thinking about it yesterday when I was signing off on the orders, what a great opportunity to demonstrate the value of an inventory management system, the kind you should have in the kitchen, is PPE is actually going to be by the end of the year three times more expensive. Even though it's CARES Act money, federal money, you still have to manage it like it's your own because it might have some alternative use that's equally compelling. And if it's not there, it's not there. Then today, I think we, we got, on August 18th, what is actually the first day scheduled? Is it September 7th or 16th?
16th.
16th. So we're, whatever that is, 28 days or 29 days, because August has 31, away from this event. And we had our first meeting with the fire chief and the building commissioner at the schools. Obviously, I wasn't there to discuss how people are going to move around the building and whether or not those plans for one-way corridors and other things are compliant with life safety code and the building code. And I, I think people were a little bit taken aback today, but the building official is not satisfied at all with what he's been shown. And his requirement, and Adele is supportive of this, is there must be a floor plan for every single floor of every single building to show us how you're going to do it so that we know that you're following safety. And that's, we've got, they've got 30 days to turn this thing around and get the appropriate person to put this in place. I don't hold it against the new superintendent because there's a transition that's not his fault.
Correct.
He applied for the job, he got the job, he started in July. But to me, a lot of this, social distancing, moving people around, this, this is ops. This is pure, simple, physical realities. How are people going to move around? How are we going to get supplies? And that is where we don't see the product that we need to see. And as I've said all along, pandemic has revealed a number of things about the way people operate, their comfort level making decisions, their comfort level pushing decisions on data-driven basis up to whoever needs to make the decision. And at this point, you know, there's still time, but the clock is ticking. And, you know, I just want my building official and our fire chief to know from my perspective, we will not compromise one inch that if they're not ready on their scheduled first day of school by the satisfaction of the life safety officials of the town, they won't open. Period.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
In the event that it goes that route, which, I can't really hold, to your point, you can't hold in a superintendent, but previous performance kind of leads me towards they're, they're going to come up short. Have we asked the question that they have the infrastructure, technology speaking, and a solution technologically speaking, to be able to, until they get the logistics figured out on graphic flow of people in and out of said building on each floor, to sufficiently educate the kids in Douglas? That's a bigger concern that I'd have.
It is, and I don't know the answer. Um, what I will volunteer is that I think the new superintendent has actually given a lot of his time to consideration of a platform for distance learning. Because I think he saw the need for there to be an organized, structured program, uh, and pulling on his own resources, his classroom educators, you know, fitting them within, you know, a stronger rubric than last year, which was kind of, we're going to do the best we can because this was the wool.
Correct.
The rug was pulled out from underneath us in the middle of the year. So I, I have some confidence level there. I think he's given that a lot of attention. I have reason to believe that the special education coordinator is also on top of that game because that's a very challenging environment. Think about all the things that are coming together here. You know, people who need, you know, direct attention coming into an environment that's totally different, looks different, feels different, isn't it? So I have, I'm very hopeful on those lines. Um, but I, we're so close to this happening. And right now, I'm, I'm hoping that they have everything they need in place to make it happen.
They kind of clarify a little bit. Like, they have 30 days' time to figure out ingress, egress, and traditional movement throughout a building. And not just one building, multiple buildings. And even with, like, people that specialize in these things, like, if you even look down, like, if you look at, like, military operations on trying to be able to traverse multiple buildings or get through any specific floor plan, those take months to coordinate on a single building. That's a single floor building. So, I mean, if they actually pull it off on four buildings in 30 days and actually have something that's viable, I'd be impressed. You know, and it's certainly not a shortcoming of theirs. I mean, this is, there's a lot of heavy lifting in that.
So all I would say is that traditional vets are off. Uh, if there's work to be done and the calendar says it's Saturday, who cares? It's time to burn the midnight oil and get this all lined up so that the school committee and everybody else who might be involved in decision-making can vet the product. So it's not just having it ready on September 15th. Have it ready well in advance so people can look at it. Um, I'll get off my soapbox, but I'm, I'm kind of, you know, weary of dealing with this. Um, I think we're all Peter Principled out over there. And, you know, it's time to really think about what we need. Because to have somebody in my role. Because to have somebody in my role, you know, going out to the market and surfing supplier websites to get you the stuff you need and try to do so in a way that's fiscally responsible, I'm happy to do it, I'm qualified to do it, but I don't think it's part of what the town is expecting me to do.
And Matt, I can say this, is that I've been privy to the quality of work that has come into you at your request from the school business office. And I can say frankly, if you presented to this board what has been presented to you from the school business office, we'd be doing another town administration search.
By, I mean, photocopies of ads and lab certifications that are half in Turkish, half in English, reference to a treaty that the United States is not even a party to, with reference to the validity of those test results. I just, really? You know, and that was my first response when I got this stuff was, you're killing me with the Turkish lab results, right? I mean, what is this about? So I think we've got to get to a little bit more sophisticated points.
Does it have the FDA sticker on it?
No, it has lots of rather inarticulate explanations of the relationship between that vendor in Turkey and the United States Food Drug Administration.
Right.
Which is, this is not an endorsement and blah, 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 you know. It had nothing to do with the project. The project was, I need 11,511 three-ply water-resistant masks, and that I can work with. Anybody can work with if you're in procurement. That's enough. The rule is, you're supposed to specify in your written purchase description at a level of detail sufficient so that a vendor responding to your request knows what product they issued.
Right.
And that's absolutely essential.
So let's just save Turkey for Thanksgiving.
So I'm done.
Well, I'm going to, as you're sitting here telling me that the building inspector isn't happy with what's going on there, I'm just thinking, what could possibly be so different when the building is literally going to be 50% occupied?
Now, that's what I have to feel.
Didn't mean to.
No, it's okay.
So Thursday, Friday, we were dealing with a debacle with ordering the PPE. And I think there were some misunderstandings there, but during, when that happened, and this sort of, I'm going to get on my soapbox, soapbox a little bit, this is why I need an assistant chief. Because the email that came from the state, from the building inspectors, the state fire marshal regarding the opening of school, all the, all the criteria that they wanted that's changed. In other words, I'd already been over to some of the, I already met with the elementary school, and it was six feet apart, and the desks have to be six feet apart, and things like that. I'd already gone over some of that, but obviously the target changed. They keep moving the target. So in the, in the defense of the school, they moved the target on them, and they also moved the target on myself and the building inspector as well. So I actually wanted to have a chance to digest that information before I actually went up there. So the principal from the middle school called me Friday, and I said, you've already talked to me, don't worry, I'm not, I'm going to have you back, I'll be up, I'll try to be up Tuesday. So we went up today, and I called the building inspector, and we went up together. And we, we talked about what's changed, because you're right, Tim, it's 50%. It's only like 150 kids that'll be in that school at any one time. However, they want the floors marked in colors as to traffic patterns, and they had already etched in their mind that there were certain hallways, they were going to be one-way. Well, you can't have one-way when you have exits and egresses. So if an alarm goes off, they have to understand, okay, all bets are off, this isn't one-way anymore. So those are the things that have to be put in writing and put on plans so that not only we know that ahead of time and we can approve it, but the building inspector in his wisdom wants an architect to look at each plan and stamp it so that it's not just on us. Because, you know, it's public safety. And quite honestly, we got this memo on late on Thursday afternoon, and again, you've got to digest that information and, because it was put in a memo that was not just, this is schools, it was also like the tents outside, picket fence, it was all the outside tents and how they have to be secured and all that. So it was all this mishmash of all these building code issues that came up that we didn't have six months ago because we didn't have COVID. So it's a work in progress, and we told them we'd work with them the best we could. We were getting ready to go in and do our regular inspections anyway, this time of the year, we're probably going to get there a little early this year. But technically, I like to go in after the teachers are there. So I can see that they brought in their lawn chair that's not fire-rated from home and things like that, and there's rugs there that, and carpet that shouldn't be there that hasn't been tested and hasn't been treated for fire protection and things like that. So, you know, we'll get it done, in my opinion, we'll get it done on our end, working with them, but there's going to be some work to do. And I feel the same way as Mark, that I want to know, I want to see something that's been stamped by a fire protection, an engineer or an architect who's going to be able to certify that this is, you know, he sat at a desk a lot longer than I did to make sure that, that things are, that the children are going to be safe. And.
We're all, I think, everyone who's in this room and on the call is a parent. You have little guys ingrained in their heads, this is a one-way because of the germs, so you have to always go this way.
Except.
When there's a fire alarm, not everybody's running around like chickens with their head cut off, are they going to remember that? So you're creating risk of type one error because everybody's going to have in their head that they need to go some way. It's kind of like, I remember this as a kid, there was a barn burning crazy, right? Where were the cows going?
Into the barn.
Into the barn because the barn's where they felt safe.
Right.
They knew something was going on with all sirens, so they ran right into the barn.
But we had it at a fire drill last year where we were up at the high school, and there's a foyer that's out back, and some kids were out, already outside, and the fire drill went off, they came back into the school through off the front. You're already outside, please don't come in. So it's just, again, when you're not in the business of safety, it's the furthest thing from your mind. So, you know, we just have to remind people and.
If you're ingraining into an elementary school kid, this is the way that you're going. They don't, seven, eight, nine-year-old kids do not understand, with the exception of.
Right.
Which is why in the SAFE program, when we taught the SAFE program in the schools, we would do fire drills where we would stand at the end of a hall and say, you can't go out this way, this is blocked by fire, just simulate it. So now you know, you need to go to your alternate exit, which is supposed to be posted on, in each, in each classroom. So it gets, it's not rocket science, but it's also, people get the deer in the headlights look when the alarm goes off.
That and any barrier we build to protect people from the virus is now a barrier that's in the way of moving around freely. So, you know, that's why we're going to be very supportive of Mark and his enforcement of this school.
Freedom of movement is key in staying safe. So barriers will get you killed.
Unless you're a member of the Rhode Island House. Right, Tim? $56,000 worth of flexi-glass. They're movable attached to the ground.
Architects' fees, are they COVID-related reimbursable? All right, architect it up.
All right. Are there any other topics not reasonably anticipated with 48-hour notice?
None from me, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Bone?
None here.
Mr. Hughes?
I have nothing.
Mr. Davis, none?
Mr. Davis, none. I would now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Bone and I.
Cortez, yes.
Davis, affirmative. Hughes, okay.
Of course, yes. All right, thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
See you, guys.